After seven o'clock, we'd like to begin this public hearing. We'd like to welcome you, Commissioner Ogden along with Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Johnson. I want to welcome you to this public hearing tonight. We want to put down some ground rules here for this. The reason for this meeting is it's a state law required that a public hearing be held together to have input on the proposal to issue a general obligation bond. And that's what we're talking about, is a bond. We're going to give anybody that wants to speak, they can fill out a card and they can just make their comments on the card and we will take those cards. If you want to come up to the microphone, state your name and then we will time you for three minutes. So again, this hearing is to hear and collect information or input on this bond. We'll be taking notes as well as others and this will be recorded. We're going to respond, we will not be responding to any questions. This is not a time for questions and engagement and discussion tonight. First off, we're going to have Scott give kind of an overview of this project statement and so people understand this project and how this has to take place. It goes in certain phases, so that's kind of where we were going to go from here. There will be multiple phases in this project. So I'm going to turn this... We'll turn that over to Scott now and he can kind of go through the multiple phases on this entire process.
So if you want to speak, would you bring your cards up? We'll keep them in order. Hold them up, hold them up, excuse me, hold them up. Yeah, and then Steve will pick them up. Well, good evening. You know, we want to thank you for coming and being here. This is part of the process, I think it's part of what makes our country great, having the opportunity to have input from our citizens. So I'm going to talk just a few minutes about the bond and how it goes together and fits in with this proposed project. There are three government entities that will be joining together that are involved in this project. They are Richfield City, Snow College, and Sevier County. Sevier County is presenting to the taxpayers a bond proposal this upcoming November election. So they'll be voting on this bond this coming November. And so with that, we'll be having the opportunity to hear the voice of people concerning the bond. As you have, we have had the Sevier Valley Center in our county, in our community for a number of years. In fact, 2001, the bond was put in place for the Sevier Valley Center. So that's almost 20 years ago. In 2021, that bond will be paid off. That's what we want to do, we want to pay these bonds off. So the bond on the Sevier Valley Center will be paid off. That means that the taxes that we have been paying for that bond will go away. So in 2021, your taxes will go down. That bond is no longer a viable bond, it's paid off. By law, we then can no longer collect taxes against that bond, that bond is finished, your taxes will go down. This proposed bond, if it is approved, is a separate bond. It's different. It's, someone mentioned it's like buying a car and then if you buy another car, you get another loan. You don't carry those loans forward. But this bond is different than we're proposing tonight and they're taking your input and your comments on. This bond is smaller than the Sevier Valley Center and it's not a 20-year payment plan, it's a 10-year payment plan with a smaller annual payment. So those are two separate bonds. If that bond is approved, then your taxes will then rise to pay that bond. It'll be new taxes that will go to cover this new bond. So we wanted to make that distinction, we want to make sure that that's clear, that these are two separate bonds and that taxes will probably, the way things line up, will go down with the Sevier Valley Center bond is paid off and then in the event this bond is approved, the project goes forward. Sometime after that, then this new bond will come and your taxes will go down. Snow College will be going to the legislature for its portion of the money. Senator Ralph Olkerland and Representative Carl Albrecht will be called on to make this happen. They have everything in place, they can go to the legislature in a strong position. They've given us the indication that as they have the things that they need, they can go to the legislature and ask for the money that Snow College would have to make this happen. Being in a strong position and having the seniority and the clout that our people have in the legislature, we feel like they can make this happen. The facility would help develop the Richfield campus. It will be a good thing for Snow College. It will help to bring something to our area and we'll see that campus grow. But growing Snow College is not only good for our county, but it's also good for our kids. It's something we'd like to see happen. Having Snow College involvement in this project, I think, is important and it would be a good thing for the college. We appreciate President Cook being here and we appreciate our association with him. Richfield City has its own plan for the funding that they are going to need and they've been working towards getting that information out to the residents of Richfield. They have a plan in place that will provide for the funding that they need. So there are three different entities seeking the money for this project. They're coming from different ways of getting it, but as these projects come together, then we'll see that happen. So let me, let me just, hopefully that clears up some of that information in your minds. Let me just, for a moment, maybe deviate just a little bit, I want to talk about maybe the process that we have here tonight. We have someone from my end of the county that I talk to quite a lot. I asked him if I could use his name tonight and he said I could. Noel and I, Noel Hatch lives in Salina. Noel and I talk a lot. And Noel, hey, excuse me, Noel, I know who you are. Noel and I talk quite a bit and I appreciate that conversation that we have. Noel will talk to me, I see him in different places and we talk, we call on the phone, we visit. Noel is a good man, he and Tammy have a great family. They're very active in the Salina area and they do a lot. Noel and I may not agree on everything, but that doesn't eliminate us talking. We talk quite a bit and I appreciate that interaction. A little bit of what we talked about this last time at the end of what we were talking about, I said to Noel, I said, "Now look, Noel, I'm not trying to convince you to take a certain position on this, but I wanted to give you all the information you need so that you can make a better decision." And I think that's what we're trying to do in this process. We're trying to get all the information we can so that we can make, we can make the best decision possible. I think we are, that's why you're here tonight, is to help in that process. Noel and I exchange those comments back and forth. I think that's a healthy, a healthy interaction and that's why you're here tonight. We want to hear from you, we want to hear your comments. We're going to be writing those comments down and at the end of the day, we want to make a good decision. We think there's a lot of pieces that need to come together. This project has a lot of moving parts. All of these parts need to come together to make this happen. So just, I am grateful that you're here, we're glad to hear from you, we want to hear your comments and then we take those comments and move you forward. Commissioner, I'll turn the time back over to you.
Okay, one other thing, we're talking about a little bit about the phases and how this just goes in these different areas. Obviously, the bond has to take place. If the bond passes, then Richfield City has to go and put an application together for the CIB. The county would have to also go to CIB and get their part of this application as well. And obviously, it depends on the terms, if they're favorable or not. That can also direct which way this could go. So anyway, that's just another comment, but sometimes we, you know, we put these things down and then we want to, hopefully, we get certain terms and sometimes that's not always the case, but at least that you have that also out there as a fact. Let Ralph Brown go next and then our first person for comments will be President Cook from Snow College.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the next part that I wanted to discuss, or I was asked to discuss, is the operation and maintenance of the facility. We've had a chance to talk with the architect that they've used to create the concept plan and the overall idea of the project. So the estimate to operate and maintain this facility for one year is $850,000 and the expected or the anticipated revenues that would be earned would be $350,000, which would leave $500,000 per year for us to raise to operate and maintain this. Both Snow College and Sevier County will be coming up with $125,000 to raise to operate, maintain this facility. The balance being Richfield City covering the balance. And know that if you live in the county, we have capped at 125, it won't go up. So if, and the architect did tell us that in a few years, it'll become more expensive to operate, maintain this facility as it ages. So we're capping our pledge at 125 and so as it gets more expensive, they'll have, we'll have to find a different, a different avenue to maintain and operate the facility. We've looked at several options for the county to come up with funds that we could pledge. We will not be taking it out of our transit room tax. Currently, we invest every bit of that money into people's programs and things that we invest that will bring this money back to. And we've done really well to grow that and build that account. So that's not an option. We looked at the restaurant tax. Currently, we are using that to pay the bond on this facility and also on the Black Hawk Arena. So that is also capping. So we looked at the revenues that we're expecting to get from the solar farm and even the first year, it wouldn't be enough to cover the 125. And it's on a decreasing schedule, we get less and less each year. So it leads us back to the general fund and if that's the case, we would probably anticipate having to look or at least investigate raising taxes to cover the O and M for the county. And we hate to say that, but we don't have any other options to fall back on. We don't have anything different to look at. So if you live within the county, know that it's capped at 125. If you live within city, you'll have the city portion plus the county portion to help cover all those things. And also, another point that I was asked to discuss is this is just a concept plan that we're looking at with, when we, if this bond is successful and we start hiring an architect, at that point, if we go through the CIB process in the legislature and we secure the funding, then we'll need to secure an architect and we'll form a board and work through piece by piece what actually the building will actually be like. Some of the things that I looked at the concept plan, I don't see any places to park buses and if we have teams coming to participate and we would want to place a park for buses. I'm not a big fan of flat roofs and I would look at changing some of those things. And the outdoor pool is a 60-foot by 60-foot long measurements of the L with one outdoor feature at this point the architect said. So as I've visited the community, several people have told me, if we're going to do this, let's make sure we get what we want and what we're going to do. And I've kind of ducked my heels in for the competition pool because that will be the one piece that will bring a lot of people to our community, that we stay overnight possibly in pain and staying in the county and in the city, that would generate some TRT if they stayed. So that's in place right now, so we'll have to work through each of those pieces. So as long as it's a concept drawing, it's also a concept price. So it'll all be determined, we have to understand that, it'll have to be determined once we work through the pieces with the architect. There'll be ground surveys, soil testing, a lot of things to have happen before we move forward with it. So I think that sums up a lot of the information that I've seen that's been out there that's a little bit misleading and unclear to people. We hope this clears up several items.
Okay, we got, raise your hands if you want to make comments and Steve will pick up the cards if you've got any out there. Maybe you've got them all together. We're going to have President Cook start us off with this and we'll have Malcolm Nash will be timing so we don't go too far over our times. President Cook.
Good evening. It's good to be back in Sevier County. I don't know if you know this, but I'm from Sevier. My dad was the principal of South Florida High School for a lot of years and I grew up in Central Valley and it's just been a loved experience to come back. My wife, Jen, and I have just loved our experience so far. We've been here since May and just can't tell you how much I'm enjoying this. So I'm asked to sort of speak as to why Snow College is interested in this. Because I'm from here and because I have a great sensitivity to our communities, I'm very committed to building Richfield, the Richfield campus. And I'm committed to this because it's best for our kids and it's best for our economy. And if you've ever looked at any of the literature that relates to economic development related to campuses, to college and university campuses, the multiplier effect is significant. Snow College has been in Richfield though for 20 years and there's only 800 students. We have to do better and we will do better. It's part of my strategic plan that we're going to build this campus. But there really are four things that Snow College needs to do in order for us to draw the types of students that we need to build this campus. And I project that over time, we need to double, triple, and maybe even quadruple on this campus. But first, we need to be able to have student housing, which we are working on now. We have an RFP that is out and we hope to have student housing right around the end of 2020 or 2021. Now that allows students that want to come to Richfield, right, to study, to be able to have housing. Right now, there's not student housing and it's really being a problem, we're turning away students because they don't have a place to live. So that's number one. Number two, we have to have the academic programming. So we have to have the right kinds of programs for students to come to. So we're going to be taking a whole look at the types of offerings that we have now, those that we may need to grow because there's an opportunity and perhaps the economy has changed. We're looking at everything from nursing to IT to things that are credit related as well as non-credit, but we really are looking at a much more sort of comprehensive community college kind of, kind of offering. So we've got to have housing, we've got to have the right programs. The third thing that we actually need then is the right type of marketing and advertising, which we're doing, the type of, the right kind of improvement. So that's the third piece. But the fourth relates to this project and that is student life. We have to be able to have students that are going to come to Richfield, study at Snow College, to have the program and the housing, but to be able to have the external student support and the student life to be able to support that kind of, that kind of operation. It's essential. And what I would say is that we're sort of supportive of this and I hope that, I hope that you see that the benefit isn't just to Snow College. The benefit is to the county and it's in the benefit of this state. And this is the argument I'll be making on your behalf as I go to the legislature and I go to donors and others, that this is a project worth investing. Unless these things kind of come together, I think we're always going to sort of live alone at Snow College in Richfield and I don't want that to happen. Well, thanks for your time.
Okay, we have the first one here, Sarah Straw. Do you want to come up and speak to Mike? Did you want to speak or just wanted to give us your comments?
Just want to shout. I didn't want to be first. Can you still hear me? I don't know how to work things, I'm not a rock star. To me, this is about community and community is about people. And if you want your community to thrive, those people have to reproduce. And if they're going to reproduce, you gotta have something for that reproduction to do while they're growing up. And I've been here a lot of years and it's always the same, oh, nothing to do, let's go get drunk. You know, so this would be good, give them something to do. Want to have a good, strong, healthy community, you've got to invest in it. And yeah, investing costs money. And what are you going to get in return? A good, strong, happy community? What's that worth? I know, I'd like to find out. It'd be kind of nice because there's not much for kids to do or there's not much for us old people to do either. And I wouldn't mind having a community center. I always wondered, how come Moab has such a good community center? How come Bountiful has such a good community center? Why don't we have a good community center? Now's your chance. You can have a good community center if your priorities are lined up that way. So, you know, what are you going to do? Save your money or save your kids?
Good, thank you. Next is Jed Maxwell. After that would be Noel Hales.
Well, my name is Jed Maxwell, I'm the mayor of Salina City. I'm glad that you clarified the transit room tax because that's what's been going around and proposed, whether they're going to take that money from that transit room tax, which if that was the case, it would really hurt what Sevier County has going between the Black Hawk Arena and the SBC Center. To remove them funds to build this rec center would be catastrophic. So now we go to the next thing because everybody's saying how free this is. We just heard your commissioner say we're going to have to raise the taxes to cover their end of the bond of the $125,000. And it's not that it's a 10-year deal, this is a lifetime payout of $125,000. We don't know what a lifetime in Sevier County looks like. You know, we got to, we got to be realistic. We have politicians that could change the outlook of Sevier County in one election. A coal mine goes down, jobs go away, who's going to pay for this facility? Salina City 100% will support Richfield building a pool and if they want to build it with the college, we support that, but we 100% do not support the county helping fund this facility for a lifetime. We are on board with funding some of the bond for a period of time, we're not at all on board of a lifetime commitment. That's just way too much to, for a four-year elected commissioner or mayor or anybody to make a lifetime commitment. I don't feel that that's in their best interest for the county and the residents. So that's, that's my pitch. So, thanks guys.
Okay, thank you. Next is Noel Hales. After Noel, we'll have David Ogden.
Thank you, commissioners. I would have thought this whole place would have been jam-packed and standing room only. I'm very surprised. I've been a longtime citizen of Sevier County. I was born in Salina. I've lived in either Redmond or Salina all my life. As a senior in high school, I was one of the first to attend where the campus is now, which at that time was Sevier Valley Tech. When that building was first opened, we moved from the old building to the new one where it stands now and now it's Snow College. I have always been a supporter of Sevier County. With my family's business, before we sold it, we were always involved in trying to make the economy of Sevier County better for everyone. We employed over 100 people in this county, paid a lot of taxes to this county. I don't know that there's anybody in this room that is more, has more connections right now with Snow College than I do in this room. My wife runs a bookstore both in Ephraim Campus and in Richfield Campus. My son, oldest son, is the head of human resources for Snow College. I've got a daughter that's a student in the music program, her fourth year. I've got a son that's in the music program, the second year, at Snow College. I attended Snow College. I didn't get my diploma there, but I spent two years at Snow College. I don't have a problem with this project. I don't have a problem with Richfield City building this project because we in Salina built our own pool. We in Salina are paying for our own pool. We in Salina built our own rec center. We in Salina paid for our own rec center, okay? I think it's just wrong that Richfield City asked the county to help fund their project. I think one of two things need to happen. Either one, they scale down the project by 33% and take Sevier County out of the project or Sevier County and Snow College, their participation to go 50/50 and take Sevier County out of it. My opinion it is wrong for the county to invest in Richfield, in Salina, Monroe, Annapolis. It's not their role, it's the improper role of the Sevier County government to do that. I think the city should do it on their own. I have no problem with the college, I think it's a good project for the college to help with. I understand having things for kids to do. I was a student once myself, okay? But I just think this is wrong for the whole county to participate in this project. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Next we have Mayor Ogden and after him, we will have Ty Jensen.
I'm grateful to be here tonight. I had no idea how many people would be here and I'm happy to see friends and associates. When I was a young man, I started delivering milk because it was a family business and I delivered milk to people in Salina and I learned to love these people. The only problem I ever had was with Salina, as they figured out how to beat us in basketball, Smokey Swartson would have somebody stand behind you when you went to run down the court, you'd run over him and pretty soon you'd foul out. And I think I fouled out in the first half of mini ballgames. So that upset me a little bit, but my dad said, "Don't be upset, you will find that the people in Salina are just the same people there are anywhere." So, well, you don't... So, well, you know, I don't have any animus or any hatred for anybody in Salina. I have a lot of good friends over there, and I know that we differ on many issues probably, including this one. I just want to say, and I'll echo what President Cook said, I think this would be a great thing for the college. I think it will be a great thing for Richfield, but in the broader sense, I think it would be a wonderful thing for our county. When you stir up activity and people are going to and from, it always helps. The rising tide raises all boats. I think it would be a benefit for Salina. I just absolutely do. I think that, I just hope this doesn't create any more animus than there already is in suspicion because I think folks in Salina are just like the people here, for the most part. I know that there are some that really do have some deep-seated suspicion that everything has been weighted towards Richfield, and I'm sorry that you feel that way. When I asked my son, who's a chiropractor here, about the Blackhawk Arena, I said, "What do you think about that?" He says, "I love it. I have people that come to my business that have been coming here for several years that go to the Blackhawk Arena and become part of Arizona." And he said, "One visit to my chiropractic business pays for the taxes that I spend to supporting the Blackhawk Arena." So he says, "I'm a big fan of it. Somebody asks me to make a comment about it, I'll say it's a great thing." And now that family that came, they come with more people and they visit his business several times. So that's just what happens. The rising tide raises all the boats. I think it will raise the boats in Salina, maybe not to the degree that it will in Richfield, but you just never know the way that you can benefit from something. I think it'd be a great thing for Richfield City, a great thing for Salina and the rest of our county. And I think that we can look forward to 30, 40, 50 years of something that our children will like, not just the children of Richfield, but the children of the county and the surrounding area. And I think it will bring economic development to all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Ty Jensen. And then we have Swin Michelle.
Sorry about that. Gavey, ladies and gentlemen, and I moved away in 2003, a long time ago. When I moved away from here, I left here with an animus. I actually hated this place. Me and that last four years, I've turned to love this place. This place has become my home. I always called Salt Lake City and Orham, Utah my home, but this was truly my home. But the one thing that we're missing here, and I hope that you guys can speak on this, is growth. For a long time, this county's been used to the girl-boy syndrome, been used to the older generations, the silent generation, and the, you know, just the regular girl-boys putting their two cents into everything. But with this building that's going to be built, and I hope that we all hope, yes, like there was some animus towards the problem of the people of Salina, but growth is about us moving forward, not taking a step back. If anybody's been in the military, you know if you're not advanced, you're a tree. Richfield can't stay small, and neither can Sevier County. That's just the truth of the matter. So $24 million for a project is about right. Living in Orham and Salt Lake, those buildings that we were talking about, $24 million, are probably closer to $40. So this is a good thing for Richfield, but now I want to answer, you know, I want them to answer a little bit about us growing. Right now, Sevier County holds about 20,000 or 21,000 people, correct? What are your plans to help bring in new taxes, new businesses, so that we can support this rec center and improve the growth of this county moving forward? Thank you.
My name is Swin Mike, so, and Commissioner, that's the first time anybody's ever messed up my name, maybe. It happens all the time, so don't worry about it. I'm actually fairly new to the area. I've only been here for about eight years, six, eight years. But that's my understanding that there are three high school swim teams that will be affected by the decision of this bond. One of them is in Salina, one of them is in Monroe, and one is here in Richfield. The way I look at it is if this is built properly, there can be a lot of activity brought to Richfield just by that pool. We can have at least three swim meets here, which will bring people from all different parts of the state. If it's built right, we could have regional swim meets here. And that would bring a lot of people in from all over. And if it's built right again, we could possibly even have the state tournament here. Now, that increase, that would mean increased revenues for a lot of people in Salina, in Richfield, in Monroe. Because, let's face it, a lot of people have to come through Salina to get to Richfield. A lot of people do. And there's not really a lot of motels around as well, so that spills over into Salina as well. So I think it's a benefit not only to Richfield, but to pretty much all the communities in this area. So, thank you.
Mike Turner is next. And after that, we will have Tanner Thompson.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Mike Turner. I owned a business here in Richfield for over 30 years. And I've lived in Richfield up until two years ago, but we moved to Monroe, my wife fell over there. So I've been in Sevier County for a long time. I've operated a business for a long time, and I've paid a lot of taxes through the businesses. And I've collected a lot of sales taxes that benefited the community. My concern with this project is, long-term, how is it going to be funded? And I have a little experience on this because when I served on the Richfield City Council from 2010 to 2013, I brought a proposal to the commissioners back then and asked them would they be interested in helping put a project together with the pool. And it was a community-type center. It's $14 million is what I proposed. I worked with one of the contractors in Salt Lake that worked with Richfield City at the time. And I was told, "No." They were not interested. So things have changed a little bit since then. And when you do these projects, they're paid for by taxes. And those taxes are generated by bonds, by, in some cases, transient room taxes. But we as business owners and residents are going to have to pay for this thing. Richfield City's bond is for 30 years. There are people who will be paying that bond who aren't even born yet. Sevier County has chosen to go 10 years, which I think is wise. But the concern is, five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years down the road, how is this thing going to be paid for? Our economy right now is heavily based on fossil fuels, and they are under attack every single day. We are fortunate to have an administration in Washington who's favorable to those. My understanding is right now that Huntington is looking at closing one plant and going to natural gas. Is that correct? So at some point, our coal industry is going to start having to move their coal outside of the area, which is a problem. And they're still going to be under attack. We get an administration in Washington DC, and the policies the environmental groups are making, if this coal mine and our fossil fuel industry, our oil that they're pumping over by Sevier, if those run out, who's going to pay for that? Who's going to make up the difference when those sales tax revenues, which are some of the biggest in the county, go away? It's going to be us. The business owners are going to pay 100% of that assessment. You, the homeowners, are going to be paying 50% of the assessment. Is that correct? Okay. So this is a small amount. We're talking about putting a pool out here right now. $18 and $36 for a $150,000 home. $18 for a $150,000 home, $36 for a $150,000 value in business. So for me, I'm going to be putting out a couple hundred dollars a year right now. But what happens down the road if we have to make up that difference? What I'm saying is, it is going to become unaffordable to do this unless you bring businesses to this county first. That's the way to build this thing. Bring the businesses in and then build this. This is the wrong time.
Next is Tanner Thompson. And then we'll go to John Ogden. John, do you want to speak?
So this is going to want to talk about, well, this would be good for kids, this would be good for, you know, the community, and I agree with all that, but that's not the question that needs to be asked or answered. The question that needs to be asked, and it's these guys' job, is, how do we survive the next 20 years? Both Noel and Mike and Brother Maxwell both talked about how, you know, coal is up in the air, and I want to drive that point home. Coal is up in the air. And if coal goes away, this community, right now, goes away unless Snow College grows and we bring in revenue from Snow College, unless the county commissioners bring, along with our, if there's an economic growth in this area, then there's manufacturing jobs that are brought here. That's got to be our goal, but if instead our idea is, coal might be going away, let's hunker down and just suffer through it, and once it's gone, we just sit and look around at our town that is 50% of what it was, then we can remember this evening that that's what we chose to do, was just cower and quit. Because that's the alternative. We either spend money, invest, and grow this area, or we just kind of roll over into the bath and die. So whichever, if you want your grandkids to be able to come and live here again, then we need to invest back in this area. I also own a business. We've got about 30 employees, 12 of which are in Richfield, 16 of which are in Lehigh. I want to bring all of them here. I'd like to build about a 30,000 square foot building that would bring all those manufacturing jobs to Sevier County. But guess what? The skilled laborers that I need live in Utah Valley, and they work for me up in Lehigh, but they won't move here because it's in the middle of nowhere. There's nothing to do in Richfield. I don't want to raise my kids in that area. And so when you talk about, hey, let's bring the businesses first, and then somehow they'll magically be convinced to get here, you're putting the cart before the horse. We have to build a community that people want to come to, and this is a project that will do that. They want to come to a community where there's a college presence. They want to come to a community that they can be proud of. They want to come to a community where there's jobs. That's a grassroots effort, and this project is an investment towards that reality. So I guess to reiterate the question, how do we survive the next 20 years? Are we going to roll over and quit, or do something about it?
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Morgan Shaver, and then Kay McKiff. Morgan Shaver?
Kay McKiff.
Okay. We'll let you go first, Kay.
Well, I thank you so much for the audience. I speak in favor of the project for many reasons. I've watched the growth in our state the last few years, the last couple of decades. Cedar, St. George, Ephraim, and all of them are tied to higher education institutions. It is crucial that we make our institution as attractive as it possibly can be. It's an important ingredient on that campus to have the special events center there. Huge. It would be equally important if we have up-to-date recreation center. We invest collectively as a county. We're all, we all have something at stake. I have something at stake at the arena in Salina. It's on land of which I was the primary owner, and it's donated land. I'm glad for that. I'm glad it's there. I'm prepared to donate significantly to a new center here because I believe in it, and I believe that it helps our economy. In a small area like this, we all have to work. We all have to make it work and do it together. So Commissioners, I'm on for the long haul. Thanks.
Next is Morgan Shaver, and then we'll have Julie Shepherd.
My name is Morgan Shaver. I grew up here, and then I've, the last four, five years, my brother and I, we started a company. We've gone from zero to, I think we're between 55 and 60 employees right now. We're actually currently discussing, well, we have a fear of not being able to continue to grow at the rate we want to in Richfield. That's because our labor pool is only so big. We're looking at outside towns. We're actually, we've actually discussed Ephraim, looking at Ephraim because of the students that are there. If we didn't have to do that, that would be, that would be our dream. We moved here and started a company here, from here. And we wanted to provide something for the community where kids could work, where they could work while they go to school. That would be the ideal scenario. And just to kind of echo what Tanner said, I don't, I don't think there's a way for the community to continue to grow and sustain itself without investing in something else besides the coal plant. So I just wanted to echo those comments. Thank you.
After Julie, we'll have Crystal Anderson.
Julie Shepherd, from Salina. You know, I've never really understood it. I didn't grow up here, but I've never understood the power struggle between Richfield and Salina. I've had a tough time with that. We're in the same county. We should have some of the same goals. If the county has money they want to give us, great. We need to build a new city center over in Salina. But no, we're going to earn the money ourselves. We're building a new pool. We're going to earn the money ourselves. A new library, a new police center. Okay, we're told we have to earn that money ourselves because we haven't gone to the county because it's wrong. I'm concerned about our seniors. Are the seniors going to be able to use this facility and their taxes being raised when they're on fixed incomes? That's a big concern to me. I'm going to be there someday, but what about the ones today? Their money is not being raised. Another thing, we have a, we have a center over there, I mean, a big piece of property over there that we've been trying to bring businesses into for how long? Mayor? How many long? How long have we been trying to bring businesses into our industrial center, Jed? 20 years. Anything that has came in that has any interest, we have been shot down. Am I supposed to be pleased about this project? Absolutely not. Because I don't see that economically we can do it, and we can afford it, and we can support it with our demographics of this community. Thank you.
And thank you, Crystal. Actually, we have a contact.
My name is Crystal Anderson, and I just kind of wanted to talk to you a little bit about what kind of hasn't been mentioned. And that is our competition pool. Swin talked about it a little bit, but this community center is going to be built in phases. If the county does not go through, if that portion does not go through, then we lose our competition pool. I'm the high school swim coach, one of the swim coaches, and I don't know if you understand how many people, and kids, children, that that impacts. I know it's hard to understand, but I coach around 50 from South Salina, yes, too, but that's only going to get bigger. When I swam in high school, we only had 12 kids on our team. Yes, that was 20 years ago, but it still was, you know, we had 12 kids on our team. Now we have close to 50. Our summer swim team, we... Our summer swim team, we had about a hundred kids this year. A few years ago, when Coach Crimmins was coaching, we had close to two hundred. Due to some mismanagement there, it kind of got put down, where she, when one of the people only allowed fifty people on the swim team. But now it's growing again. We're bringing in USA Swimming. It's huge. It's huge for this team, for this area, for, for the state. That's just something that's going to keep growing and growing and getting bigger. Right now, when we have swim meets, and we have six to seven a year at our pool, we pack the pool. The whole area deck space is full. We have people out on deck, that includes our summer, summer meets as well. We have people coming to the area, spending money in the hotels, spending money in the restaurants. That's just more money for our area. I understand. I, I do, I understand, and I'm not here to sway you to vote, to your vote or anything like that. I just wanted you to realize that this competition pool, it will be gone if this county vote does not go through, and that impacts a lot of people. If this does go through, like Swin mentioned, we have the opportunity to maybe host states, we host region events that bring in lots of people. We have six teams that come and bring thirty to forty swimmers, that's lots of families, lots of people, that then they can swim in the recreation area as well, not just in our competition pool. This year, we're hosting an invitational, sixth and seventh of December. We have teams from up north that are bringing sixty to seventy kids. Right now, I have eighteen, eight teams coming that are bringing sixty, seventy kids each. Now you add their families on top of that as well. That fills our hotels, that fills not just our hotels, but they're going to spill over into other areas as well. So I, like I said, I'm not here to sway your vote, I'm not here to tell you what's right or wrong. I know what I'm going to vote, I know what I'm going to do, but I just want you to realize that it doesn't just impact you, it impacts this whole community and lots of children.
Crystal? Crystal, just a clarification, I didn't catch, how many swim meets you're currently holding?
This year, we will host seven here in Richfield. One of those is our, and that's not our summer swim meets, that's just our high school. Our high school season goes from September to February. We start competing in November, and from November to January, January, we host seven meets with that one invitational. We'd like to host two invitationals, but right now, we can't do that. We just don't have the facility and the space and the pool is falling apart, so we can't do that. In our summer meets, we host about one a month. We host one large invitational at the end of the summer. Usually, we bring ten to twelve teams, lots of people, lots of people for that swimming. And with USA Swimming, that will only get bigger.
Okay, Melissa Winters.
I think I'm just going to hold that, is that okay? So I would like to echo what a lot of people have said today, I really liked some of the things that Tanner said. I've been living in Richfield now for sixteen years. I grew up in Emery County, so I grew up in coal country, and I'm watching my county die. The town that I grew up in, there's probably seventy homes for sale right now. My husband is from Delta, so we sit halfway in between. Things are changing over there. From what I understand, and I'm not totally sure, so if I'm wrong, correct me if you know, but I believe that in two thousand and twenty-four, that power plant will be converted over to a natural gas plant, is my understanding. So we, in this county, we do a lot of trucking. It's, it's a big deal. So we have got to find a way to stay vital, and living here, if you think about it, we are in an ideal location. We've got I-70 and we have I-15. We need to take advantage of what we've got. I've watched, since I've lived here, the natural gas plant that got shut down before we moved here, I don't know how long it was before, maybe somebody here knows, but I heard the Walmart distribution center that now sits outside of St. George. I think there's, there's been some good opportunities, but why I bring this up is that if we want to stay vital, I think that we have an awesome opportunity with Snow College, because if we can help grow that college and create some kind of campus life, then that can develop, and if we have a rec center, it's a draw for our area. It makes our area somewhere that people want to come, and businesses will want to come here, because it's a good, attractive community. So I, I feel pretty strongly about that. I do know that it's scary, it's a lot of money, but I think as a county, we need to come together. We've, in Richfield, we've helped pay for the Black Pop Arena, we've got the SBC, there's things that we all have that are in each one of our communities, and I think that we not, need not to bicker over who has what, but we come together. I know, for me personally, I've taken my kids to Salina a gazillion times. We've paid, you know, for that pool, and we go over there and we buy things and spend money, and so I think that this will be good for all of us. And really, if you think about it, Salina is not that far away as far as driving. I've driven my kids to Provo to go to an ice rec center. So I, I hope that we will come together on this and, and make it work.
Well, before I start my little speech, some of the people from Salina mentioned a couple of things they wanted me to bring up, and one was the transportation of getting kids from Salina to Richfield to use the facility. We're going to have, we have our own rec center in Salina. We are going to have our own outdoor pool, and when we need an indoor pool, it's a whole lot closer for us to go to Guinness than it is to come to Richfield. And so transportation would be an issue for the people of Salina. Is that it? No, I got done, that was before my speech. Now you're going, now you're going to get my speech. Okay, Judge McKiff, Megan, when you go into court, how well do you do when you make an assertion without evidence? You're not, I'm not supposed to ask questions, you don't have to answer it. So basically, what I'm saying is tonight, I've heard a lot of assertions, very little evidence, and I'm disappointed we can't ask questions, because I can't get that evidence that I'd like to get. Some of the assertions I've heard are, the development center will bring students. Logically, I would say, it's probably true, but I didn't hear any evidence of where that's been, where that's happened, and where this facility would make that difference. I've also heard the assertion, the development center will bring business. Again, maybe it's true, I don't know. I didn't hear any evidence that states this business, this business, this business and this business have committed to come to Sevier County if we have this wonderful recreation center. So you want me to commit my taxes to a facility that I may not, that may not bring additional business to Sevier County? I've heard the assertion that, this is my favorite, the development, development center will benefit Salina. I mean, people will have to drive through, but nobody has told me how many rooms are going to be rented over there. We don't see it. I know some people on Facebook told me I should go out and get information from the hotels and the restaurants. I stay in pretty good touch with the hotels and restaurants in Salina, and I don't know, nobody's given me evidence of how many rooms are being rented over there because of the Sevier Valley Center. Nobody's told me how many people come over there and eat at our restaurants because of the Sevier Valley Center. They keep telling me I'm benefiting from it, but I'm almost there, I'm close. Okay? Again, no evidence that tells me Salina will, in fact, it's a great assertion, but no evidence that Salina will, in fact, benefit from it. And again, I need that evidence before I can vote, and I'm disappointed that I can't ask those questions tonight in order to get that evidence, because I want to make an educated decision.
Okay. Well, we do appreciate everybody's comments, but yes, okay, Angie.
I grew up here, I graduated from here. I went to the tech center before it was Snow College. I didn't think I would become anything. They turned it into Snow College, I graduated from there, I started my own brokerage. Investing in our future is worth it. At what point do we step forward together as a community and invest in our future? A hundred percent I'm for this. I'm for uniting Salina. I have family in Salina, I love Salina, I love Monroe. My business is Sevier Valley Realty. I want this to happen.
Okay, there again, we appreciate everybody being here for this public hearing. Appreciate the comments. There was a lot of good comments, and I think that we go forward, there'll be a lot of public presentations, so you can get more answers, and we want people to understand all of the sides of this, and what this will do or not do for our county. But I think we've heard a lot of good comments, and I appreciate all of you being here. Thank you.